Okay, it's called being ordered and please stand for like.
I'm like the United States of America and to the Republic and one nation of the government. Justice.
Roll call.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grousman.
You're.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Mayor Sumner.
Here. Introduction of media. Any media show up since last meeting? Anyone wishing to speak before City Council tonight on any subsequent matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recording. Formals are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image in the hand. Reminder for council, speak into your microphone when talking so everyone can hear you guys. Public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must must come up to the microphone. Any public comments on agenda? Okay. Consent agenda, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Uh, IGA does the scanning inmate housing agreement and MOC liquor application approval motion. It's like it's all at once yet. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the city's president. And the IGA and the motion.
Yeah, it's all one motion. We're taking care of.
Okay. Okay.
I have Larry seconding it.
Oh, very good.
You could do the next.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Ready to vote?
Counselor Daigle.
Alright.
Counselor Whitaker.
Alright.
Counselor Smalley.
Alright.
Counselor Grousman.
Alright.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under council business, bid award Ford's pond project under construction. Staff report.
Now, so the council for annual development. Not being asked to award the contract to JRT Construction. An amount of one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for the construction of Ford's Pond Community Park and Trail Improvement. This is five years. Um, partitude is being funded by five grants through the Oregon Forest and Rescue Department which the city has received with the help of friends of Ford's Pond. Uh, City Park Construction Fund, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, grants of donation that uh, friends of Ford's Pond also received. Whole project funding is estimated three million two hundred twenty thousand eighty-eight dollars. Um, project costs are identified as, the reason I did this, I want to talk some contingency a little bit. So, the R K construction, their amount again is one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. The one million three hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred fifty dollars nine six cents. That is, the city was proactive and ordered a bunch of material for this project because we knew there was a, a delay with the item. So we moved forward with ordering restrooms, four D A, successful restrooms, um, the free pavilion. The four hundred limited to boardwalk, all the pieces taken, all the, yeah, little, um, graphic for the weapons announcement. So that total cost is three million two hundred eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. So with that said, typically you have between five and twenty percent contingency. Because of the delay of this project and because of the inflation cost, we have no contingency for this project. Staff and the engineer are very confident that this is a very low risk project. It's a lot of earth moving. So we don't anticipate change orders that's gonna take that contingency. But what we did, we were proactive on that and uh, as you can see on the few differences, about eleven thousand six hundred dollars between the, between the total um, engineers. Uh, excuse me, the contractor's costs and the items that the city pre-ordered. And then uh, um, we went through and did a value engineering with uh, DLA, city staff. The contractor and buyer and basically what that is, is just go through and see what items have, you know, if necessary, could we reduce the scope of work? We're very limited to what we can do because of the grants and several of the grants. Um, match, this grant matches this grant. So in order to meet the requirements of the grants, we're very limited what we could do. But basically between eleven six that we're under the estimated funding and there's about ninety, about ninety-two thousand that against what we could. Reduce the scope of work for about a hundred and three thousand dollars for contingency if needed. We talked to the contractor, we talked to the engineer, city staff. That we are doing nothing on a change order unless we can't move forward on the change order. So I just wanted to be upfront with you guys and let you know that, you know, typically you have that contingency. We do not, but we do have some value engineering um, scope of work that we could reduce if needed and we'd still need to require the grants. So with that said, um, on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, the city's suddenly received two bids, one from Ninth River and one from JRT Construction. Um, JRT Construction submitted the lowest bid. They are qualified to construct Ford's Pond Community Park Trail Improvement Project Two. Um, options are to award the contract to JRT Construction as presented in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Or not to award. Um, it is a suggested motion from staff to award JRT Construction as presented in the amount of one million eight hundred four thousand three hundred dollars.
So with, in that amount of the, oh, sorry.
Right, after the motion, in a second.
Make a motion to reward JRT Construction LLC as presented in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion in the second. Need discussion? Yes, discussion. My question is, if the, if there's something that comes in above budget of what's the awarded amount? You said there's contingency of a hundred and three thousand, where would that hundred and three thousand come from?
Again.
If, if it comes, if it comes over the amount that was awarded to them and they got this right eight.
Change order.
So. If. If, if, so in July, I'm going to come back to City Council giving up, it'll basically be a short one month, but we should know where we're at hopefully. Um, so what we have is there are some items that we worked with JRT that potentially we could change and also with city staff that they could do. So roughly there was, um, I think it was a hundred and thirty million feet of fencing that was part of the project where some staff could do that instead of the contractor. Um, it's small, it was twenty-two hundred dollars. Um, we could reduce the concrete pads where the benches were gonna go by fifteen percent. Not the size of the pad, but the number of pads for the benches. Um, there was, we had uh, about a hundred and thirty square feet of sidewalk we reduced from seven feet to six feet. So these are items that we could select from, um, if needed, if we have those change orders. But again, we don't anticipate, if this says two hundred and ten millimeter storm drain, we're doing two hundred and ten feet of storm drain, that's it. We do, we are not gonna, unless we cannot move forward on this project, we're not doing change.
Let me see if I can just answer this a little more clearly. There is ten projects that we have that if at any time we have to do a change order, it looks like we're gonna go over budget. We're gonna select one of those projects and not do them or have staff do them in lieu of. So instead of having a contingency, we have a contingency plan instead uh, to withstand any of those.
We're bidding out those projects and if the city staff is, has the ability to do that within their capacity?
No, we don't normally would, wouldn't normally do it. In fact, most grants don't allow you to.
And then my other question, would there be a phase three? If, just do it as a phase three versus um, kind of going over budget?
On this particular project too, no. If you wanted to say project three, it would be, if we're successful, I think it's June twenty-eighth for the Oregon State Marine Board Grant. And that would be for the uh, BODAC and the ramp over on the North Side of Ford's Pond.
Any other discussion?
So if I hear you correctly, this is a firm price from JRT Construction for the amount with the scope of work that we presented to them. So, the one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, yes. But if we run into a situation where we need change, we've worked with JRT and we're able to scale back some of the scope of work to keep it within budget.
I think you didn't have any questions. So you said that the city has already purchased materials that are lower than the cost before the, the price spikes had went up. Is that factored into this amount as well or is that outside of it?
No, it's one hundred percent. So that one million three hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred fifty dollars nine six cents, that is material that the city has settled and has moved forward and purchased. Pardon me? A bunch of this is covered by the grants. Um. Stand.
Almost all.
The total is, the total project is, I don't have that exact number, I didn't bring that, but the total funding project is three million two hundred twenty. Um, there's about three hundred and seventy that was for um, ARPA funds for the, for the restrooms, for the path and TRT. Um, and then there was some funds that uh, friend of Ford's Pond had raised. I think they had a hundred and forty thousand that they had raised that applied to it. Um. And then there's some donations, so I'm not, I don't have that complete breakdown with you. I can give you an estimate, but I don't have that totally.
So ninety percent of the project basically is funded by grants. We just can.
Donation.
Donation and then portions that the city carved out of ARPA funds and the tourism funds and then Friends of Ford's Pond has just done some incredibly heavy lifting and getting a lot of. Community donations, so. It's all covered, but mostly by grants.
Well, and writing all the grants.
Yes. Yes, they did.
Any other question? Second.
Counselor Daigle.
Alright.
Counselor Whitaker.
Alright.
Counselor Smalley.
Yeah.
Counselor Grousman.
Alright.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under bid award Terrace Lane Improvement project, staff reports.
Mayor, members of council, um. Back on April thirteenth, we had a bid opening for the Terrace Lane um, roadway improvements and uh, we had two bidders. Um. Uh, Guido Construction and Ninth River. Uh, materials and Ninth River was a little bitter at a hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Which was quite a bit under the engineer's estimate. We were excited about that. Maybe, maybe down just a bit right now, so. Um. It's uh, it's staff suggestion that um, uh, council moved to approve. Bid award Ninth River Materials for uh, the Terrace Lane Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. And uh, I guess we, I'll answer every question after.
No motion.
Alright.
Now your microphone. Microphone. Be careful. One million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand. One hundred ninety-nine. Also.
I'll say.
Uh, I'm the first and second to approve bid award to Ninth River Materials in the amount of one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine for Terrace Lane Improvement Project as presented. Any discussion? Yes, there's Terrace Lane Improvement area out.
Terrace, that's by Mark.
Okay.
Going north off central.
How big of a session is that that's going to be?
It's from central to fourth. I don't have the footage uh, right in front of me.
I'm here, it says the terms. Full pay, full payment or you will pay for one thousand fifteen, so would that be the estimate that it would be improved?
Only filling your budget out.
Thirty yards.
That's footage.
I'm here. It hurts.
When, when this project will take place? When will they start?
Uh, I'm not, they're, they're giving us a little window, but it'll definitely happen before June thirtieth. It needs to happen in this fiscal year.
Any other discussion? The senator.
Excuse me. Counselor Daigle.
Alright.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Purchase approval type one fire engine, staff report.
Mayor Sumner, City Council, my main party. Uh, what we're doing tonight is asking you to approve the purchase of a new type one uh, fire engine. That's like a normal fire engine. I don't want to confuse everybody. Type one is the big fire engines, type six are the little fire engines. Um, so we, we asked for some costs from a couple vendors and HME was the, was the low bid. Uh, and that's who we want to go with because they have a three-year warranty versus the other one that has a one-year warranty as well. Um, so our nineteen ninety-three engine is thirty years old. It's about five or ten years due to be replaced, so we're, we're playing a little bit of catch-up since two thousand fifteen. Uh, so we're asking you to approve the, the purchase of this engine for six hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus thirty-five thousand for some additional equipment that we need to put on it.
The motion. I motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
I'm a motion and a second to approve purchase of type one fire engine from HME. And the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand with additional thirty-five thousand for outfitting as presented. Any discussion?
So now to clarify, we're ordering this engine right now. This engine has a seven hundred day build time because of. Supply and demand, I guess, or steel or whatever, aluminum, whatever it is.
Like two, two years.
That is two years. This engine is actually budgeted. Or it's in our schedule, not budgeted. It's in our schedule for replacement in two thousand twenty-five. But because of that lead time, that seven hundred days, plus in June, this company is gonna stop taking orders for a while. Uh, because of some re-engineering stuff that they're doing and with their company. So we thought we better get on it now, get it ordered. And then we won't have to pay for it until it arrives in two thousand twenty-five. And that's when it should be budgeted, so.
Gee, what, uh, is gonna happen to the nineteen ninety-three, is it auctioned?
Nineteen ninety-three, but we probably could try to auction it. There's just not a huge market for fire engines that are, that are that old. Um, I have some history in donating those engines to neighboring fire districts. Like when I was in Roseburg, we went through engines all the time. But we just donated it to a, a smaller department. And in this case, we, if we don't send it to auction, we could donate it to. Thoroughfare or.
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 Equipment.
So, we will take most of the equipment off of this engine and put it on the new engine. The thirty-five thousand is for some things that won't come on this engine, the radio, the headsets. You know, the equipment that needs to be replaced, stuff like that. So that's what that thirty-five thousand, but most, if not all of the equipment will come off. Uh, build it before we give it away.
So no money at all will come out until two thousand twenty-five?
Pardon me?
No money at all will go?
No money should be spent till twenty twenty-five, when we actually receive the fire engine.
Thank you, question. So the, the price of the engine will be locked in at the, the six hundred fifty?
Yes.
What is the price of that engine?
Okay, so we, you're gonna say if it goes down?
Yes.
So we talked to the, the vendor. Um, and he said it's basically as simple as renegotiating and or just cancel the order. So if for whatever reason, if it, you know, if there's a huge deflationary period.
It won't happen.
But if there is, then we can renegotiate.
And that will be in writing.
Uh, yes.
Any other discussion?
Counselor Daigle.
Alright.
Counselor Whitaker.
Alright.
Counselor Smalley.
Alright.
Counselor Grousman.
Alright.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There.
Resolution twenty twenty-three point oh three, food waste reduction, staff report.
Mayor, council members, I'm just gonna go with the team. Um, Alina with Source One Serenity had approached the city, um, and I kind of reached out to each one of you to get a um, sense of whether we should proceed or not. Um, the consensus was to move forward. And so Alina is here tonight and so I'd ask if she can kind of come up and tell you a little bit about it. And then Grant, say he would fill in sanitary, who would be the subcontractor of this brand that was uh, move forward with an award to go over here to answer this question. So who is going on? Oh, the source.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Alina. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
So yeah, my name is Alina, so it's Source One Serenity and it is a nonprofit. And it was founded in two thousand sixteen with a mission to empower veterans to regain their purpose through outdoor recreation and land stewardship. So since two thousand sixteen, we were doing different outdoor activities, including fishing, fly fishing, hiking. And also land stewardship projects such as trail work on public lands. And in two thousand sixteen, sorry, seventeen, actually a post-nine eleven veteran has inspired us about this idea of burmese composting. And it was actually something about to further our mission around land stewardship. Because burmese composting is about diverting food waste from the landfill, so recycling it. And converting it into a natural fertilizer. It is also a land stewardship about caring our soil. Um, and the ultimate goal was actually so to uh, generate excessive funding to fund these outdoor activities and trail work uh, for veterans. So this program, so that I um, um, I'm offering or proposing, so it's a federal program, grant program. It is absolutely new. I think it will be just the third or fourth year. So, and it is called food waste reduction and community compost. And so this uh, program is just an amazing opportunity. So it is exactly for pilot projects. Because in many communities, food waste, it is something which is non-existent. Um, and especially in rural communities. And this is what I am so passionate about. So we in rural communities will leave so much money on the table. And that means that believe our opportunities. So, so to um, make our communities better, to uh, for, uh, provide some different opportunities for our residents. And so that our communities can thrive. Um, so in many cases, this uh, grant is a two-years uh, program. So it's actually, it's called a cooperative agreement. Um, so we actually have already, um, so what have, so actively uh, we have this grant with Douglas County. Which is actually expires in a couple of months. Um, and it's been an amazing opportunity to uh, get this funding through Douglas County. So only municipalities, cities and local governments or tribal governments are eligible to apply for this grant. Do you have any questions on that or concerning details?
You have mentioned the Glaive, it's on including uh, that's. Family distance wasn't.
Microphone.
The Glaive, so. What? Oh, sorry.
Yes, so, yes, so um, otherwise, so our facility is at the Glaive Transfer Site, which is actually on the franchise territory of Sutherland Sanitary Services. Uh, so this is where we operated and otherwise we, yes, we have been working with Douglas County.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And this doesn't really cost us any money?
No, actually it saves you money. So it really, it's, it's really up to you how you want to do that. So if you, for example, want to do your role, uh, so this grant administration, because then, so if you want to do this by yourself, of course your staff will be paid for that. Yes.
For, for writing the grant, is that what you're trying to?
No, grant administration.
Administrator.
Yes.
Yeah. Apparently, like the one that they have, C C D Business Development Group is the one who does the grant administration for theirs. So that would be something that um, Alina would kind of fulfill the application requirement as per some middle. The resolution would be an attachment supporting it. Um, it has to be applied for under the city's um, jurisdiction. And then um, the administration can be done through like C C D.
Yeah. And so in many cases, just to give you a little bit better idea, so we and Sutherland Sanitary Services would be like subcontractors for the city of Sutherland, if that makes sense.
Sorry, can you?
Um, you know what's about, this is what we will be working with uh, grants, I mean, with Sutherland Sanitary Services. Um, so for example, currently what we do in uh, Roseburg, so we collect food waste at the Roseburg VA. And uh, Fergrove Elementary School, a couple of small place, uh, places in Glaive, so commercials. So it can be actually public school, it can be commercials, so restaurants or kitchens. So it's really up to the uh, Sutherland Sanitary Services. Hmm. So uh, um, we will need to see how much we can accept, how much uh, Sutherland Sanitary Services can uh, trans, transport or deliver or collect. So uh, uh, yes, it could be optional. Is this what you mean? So like optional for uh, restaurants? Oh, oh, okay, now I understand. So if uh, if the city of Sutherland receives this grant, it won't be mandatory in, by no case, no.
What do you expect, what do you mean?
So this money would be used for collecting food waste and bringing it to our facility. So that we can also operate or so that we can recycle this food waste.
So on your, your very.
microphone.
Yes. For, um, so for example, um, Roseburg VA, so because they were diverting this food waste from the landfill. So they didn't pay, so they had less waste, the less gar, garbage. So that's why they said actually, so within a year, they have saved uh, more than one thousand dollars. And this is, and you know what's, it's actually only about the residential, it's a small department, residential uh, patients within the VA, it's really small. So just to give you an idea, one thousand that they saved it, I think that's a lot for a small facility.
You. Probably didn't do compost.
Yes.
And then you sell the compost or?
Yes, we sell the compost and worm castings. And um, if this is interesting for you, we will be happy to offer you compost for your city parks for free. Of course, we will see how much you need and how much we can accommodate, if that makes sense.
And how does? How does, how does veterans fit into this? Because that, that's when you send your.
Yes.
Your whole organization about.
Yes, so in many cases, um, actually veterans operated, it is led by veterans. Um, yes, and uh, yeah, it attracts many different veterans. So it's kind of like creates this community. Um, some of them, they volunteer, um, yeah, and actually, but in the ultimate goal, as I said, it was that for us to generate excessive funding. So that we can use it for uh, outdoor recreation for veterans. it was that for us to generate excessive funding so that we can use it for uh outdoor recreation for veterans.
So you said that grant is good for two years.
Yes.
What happens at the end of two years?
So uh what happens? We will need to see um if it is feasible that uh so this food waste collection was this places continues. And you know, so like I'm of course like in contact with other uh uh areas or uh cities. And um so what I, for example, or organizations and what I hear, so for example, like some schools um in uh Rogue Valley. So for example, they were also like were funded by a grant at the very beginning and at the after that, so they were able to fund it by themselves. So in any case, that would be as a fee for collec- collection uh waste.
So I mean our garbage would go up? Our garbage rates, what's it gonna cost the city after two years?
It won't cost you anything. So for example, let's say, um just to give you an example. Let's say um Starbucks uh will be collecting food waste, yeah, within this two years. And after that, so what we will need to reconsider, so how it fits in for everyone in the community. And so for example, if, so first of all, this um food waste, it is already less of a waste for them in general, right? So for within this two years. Um, so if let's say, they will say, no, we uh will just like use it with the normal waste, of course, that they will be paying uh how much they are paying right now. Um, but so for example, um in Lane County, so they have food waste uh reduction or food waste collection program, and they, for example, offer eighty percent less. Um, so yeah, in any case, that would be something to consider or to talk uh to Sutherland Sanitary Services.
So in theory, there would be only any of this, and even just go through the pilot program. An agreement with Sutherland Sanitary and those who participate, um those would be details that we would uh help facilitate with um through getting Sutherland Sanitary set up through it. Um, but then that agreement would carry on as a service through Sutherland Sanitary and so chose with those same people that have their ponchos.
As you've been studying, you can see how much this by doing this method. It lowers the uh landfill. Does it extend another years of land, you know?
You know, so like in any case, I can just tell you what we have done so far. So just within a year, uh we have diverted ten tons of food waste from the Rosebrook landfill.
Madam Mayor, if I do, when I was the city manager at Lakeport, California, we worked with a gentleman named Brian Donnelly and it started with a food waste system. And um some of this, he uh created a system where all the restaurants and institutions put their food waste in there. It doesn't, and no longer goes in the landfill. And he's actually perfected a system to expand on where he put leads in it, make this concoction, it makes the best fertilizer you can ever get. So it turns out to be a dual benefit, doesn't go in the landfill and create odors and cause degradation of any kind, and yet it's turned into a positive environment. But um at the end of the day, I I would think the experiment will give us an idea of how beneficial it is over time.
We can look at some resolution. And they expire out in two years, one way.
The resolution? Right, yes. Yeah, you'd have to do a new resolution that would integrate into the current rates.
And it's ultimately so um Jerry can sign the application before. Essentially, it doesn't cost the city anything. It's just as a benefit. You lose the landfill and they can opt in the future and see we just have to find the grant.
A pilot program to see.
I know, give them a hard time.
Everybody, Grant Fahey, Sutherland Sanitary Service. Um, yeah, I'm in favor. Um, it seems like a win-win. It's basically free service for these like people in the pilot program. Takes material out of the landfill and puts it to good use as fertilizer. So, yeah, I'm with you.
So so do you give us another can?
Yes, there will be another can. And just to be clear, this is for just commercial people and we had talked about a ten customer pilot program, so your restaurants, your Dutch brothers, or that kind of thing, where we have a large quantity of food waste that we could easily collect.
So wouldn't be for just the housing?
No. At least in our pilot.
Me neither.
How do you, where do you store the food before it gets taken up the fly?
So that'll just be stored at the customer's own location. Um, that'll get picked up. What we had planned was a Saturday route. I'm gonna go collect it all on a Saturday, swap out the cans, take the full ones down the line, give them the full ones, pick up empty ones that they had um emptied the week before and basically make a big loop. So all of the material will either be at the customer's location or that's where it's certainly.
So there's no storage of it at your place? You have the uh ten places already. One more question, Congress. Is there any, I also kick back because it's a long word. Um, but does the city receive any revenue from um doing this this project?
So as far as I'm aware, um Sutherland Sanitary sort of pays the city as part of our franchise fees. So if say we're charging Dutch Brothers for this service, it gets paid through Source One Serenity. Um, that money that we collect through Source One Serenity will then go into our our monthly fee that we pay the city of Sutherland for the franchise fees. So, yes, in our own way.
Trucks and everything the same, it's just instead of digging to the landfill, you take it to the recycling.
Yes, we're only gonna have a small customer base, you have ten customers. It doesn't make sense to do it in a whole-size garbage truck. You'd better off just doing it in a pickup on a trailer and just do it that way rather than getting four miles to go on the whole-size garbage truck. That was mine.
Yeah.
I think we got a little ahead. We don't have to rush.
Well, that was all.
Okay, so can I have a motion? I make a motion for proof. The name of the resolution for Renovate for U S Department of Agricultural Grant Application for Compost and Food Waste Reduction Pilot Project.
Resolution. Please say the re- resolution.
Yes, Joe second.
Yeah, Joe second.
Yes, I.
Okay.
Motion is second to the resolution twenty twenty three point oh three food waste res- reduction as presented.
What? With the resolution is to authorize them to apply for the grant. So the resolution doesn't for the term of, it's just for the authorization and signing of the great application. And above in the explanation, it says project spanned two years with the start date of December first twenty twenty three and completion date of December first twenty twenty five.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grousman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On the city manager reports.
Well, my my microphone is dead. Two quick things. Oh, we'll see how it lasts. The mayor asked me to explain, he's on the public record, your intent for the R V survey. It was not meant to measure people's uh opinions on R Vs parked in the streets or on public right-of-way. That's already not even part of the equation. It was meant to get a determination of interest from the citizens on how they uh felt we should uh I guess manage or uh allow usage of private R Vs on private property. And so just to separate the two, there's no correlation between the two. So there's that. The other thing I want to talk to you about is a joint partnership with the chamber to form a new transit lodging tax committee. The new director says this transit lodging tax, not transit room tax. So I'm I'm gonna yell to Jessica. And so as I recall, you went to give a point in council and Daigle and during the month I asked the council president Hamilton. Uh, and I want to make sure you agree that we're gonna sit down with their chamber representatives and develop a new transit room tax ordinance. So let outline the new uh distribution process in terms of how to apply um qualifications, review and approval. And then i- if you don't know, in the original agreement, you're supposed to have been getting an annual report on distribution. We've never seen that. And so this will help solve that and allow us to uh more holistically uh review tourism-oriented projects and activities that transit room tax revenues could help fund. And so with your permission, we would have uh counselors, Hamilton and Daigle part of our city team, and then the chamber will assign whoever and will meet and will eventually bring a new ordinance to you for approval. You okay with that? I'm done, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Onto council comments. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the groups. Individual comments and questions that can be answered or handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counselor DeWol.
Well, I have a number of things. One thing is a lot of times when you're talking about the Chalvo situation, you're also including uncle heart.
Yes. I've already been canceled with that, and you're right. I even admitted to the group. And every time I say we, Wayne and I actually met and talked about this a great length, how we've been so look looked at the hip that uh they have their agenda, uh we have ours, and I keep saying we when it's really them. And uh or I'll say we and it's a city, but nobody knows the difference. So the mayor has also advised that. Uh, which is why we set up two separate meetings last week. That was one specifically for the city without Wayne there. And uh for Wayne to go the other. So I apologize for uh the misgiving because on a couple of occasions where I'd say, well, we're looking at buying this property, we're doing it. Well, we really aren't at all. The city, it's uncle heart. So I think uh I think we've made that correction. No, thank you. That's nice.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
I've got the force bottom last last week and I'm excited to see it moving forward. Lots of people ride bikes, fishing and.
Counselor Grousman.
I also uh believe it's uh great ambition for the foreign songs and coffee as well. Uh, he gives more uh um a strong student that uh I think will bring a lot of recognition to the city of Sutherland. I also want to apologize for my death of diabetic going on.
I can't control it. Are you okay?
Yeah, well, I'm high.
Okay. So President.
Um, I will be praying for Sue.
You?
Yes. Um, I want to thank Karen, John Stoy and Mike, Mike and my staff for meeting with me over Music Off Central. I appreciate you guys. Then I wanted to announce, if you're not already a a Facebook Live of Music Off Central, please get on there and like us and you can see the schedule. I've already announced. I announced the third this afternoon, late this afternoon, and um we've got a great lineup. We've got our last band done today. And I'm just so excited about all of them, but I'm especially excited for July twenty seventh because we will be having dining to meal.
Their country.
I've only been having young kids' day. Who's that? Anyway, I'm excited about it. We've got some great vendors. We've got some new vendors coming and I think it's gonna be a great season. So.
Next work, yeah.
Okay, so uh I just wanted to say, uh I had my first coffee with the mayor on Saturday. And uh it's been great to start off with nine people showing up.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I was I was uh impressed and happy. Uh, we had great conversations about some pretty current issues. Some people wanted some uh updates on our Thursday night meeting, so we talked a little bit about that. We also talked about uh the R V uh survey that came out. We were able to talk about that. And a lot of them had some good ideas about the R Vs and wanted to give their opinions. Um, and wanted to share that, uh I think a lot of them felt that uh they didn't want to have uh the the current ordinance change. However, uh people are really um cognizant of of having compassion and having an understanding with where people are at in today's economy. Um, and so mainly having more of a um complaint-driven at this point that um enforce it if someone's having issues, I think. It's still having it and staying where it is right now. But I really encour- encourage people to come and uh and talk about things that are in their lives. Next one is on June third. I really enjoyed it. Yeah. That's all I have in mind.
Very cool.
The F F A dinner, I think it is coming up on the next Wednesday. And so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, onto public comment. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items of of the agenda. A time limit of three minutes for citizens shall apply. And I have Eugene Zeus.
Tycho.
Tycho, I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
That's all right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council President, Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council President, Council. Last month, I brought to you a proposal about flying the flag, your old glory upside down. And I fully expected to come here tonight and have discussions about it. But I come to find out that it's not on the meeting agenda at all. So it was kind of a surprise to me because your city manager had mentioned about postponing anything until tonight. And then taking time for the RV discussion and this discussion about asking people to be able to have time. So it was rather surprising to me to have to come here again and say what I wanted to say about flying your flag upside down. And why am I really trying to do that? Is because I was impressed the way you guys handle your meeting on your town. But your town's hurting. You have businesses here who are hurting. You have people who are hurting in this town. And I don't mean just the homeless and I don't mean the people who are already lost things and are in their RVs. You're trying to handle that. But that's the majority of your people are still hurting. That's your minority that you're trying to focus. And whether you're trying to get money from Wyden or whoever to get your homeless town or whatever you call it. That's fine. But if you go back, you're the patriarchs and the matriarchs of this town. You're sworn to help everybody in this town, not just those that are the loudest screaming, screaming like, I'm homeless. So I'm living in my RV because I've lost everything. Inflation, as your city manager has said, is rearing its ugly head and it hasn't gone down since I was here a month ago. It's going up. Banks are failing all over this country. And I hope the money that you have your accounts in for the city, those banks are solid because you might just lose your money. And then where's all your, you're talking here tonight and your, your budget's going to be? This country is in dire distress and danger. And I brought that to you last week or last month, I'm sorry, to let you know that this is all nice and good. But if this country goes down, which is on the verge of doing. And I think people in this place know that it's on the verge of going down. And one way that we can do this to show that, hey, we're aware and you can show your people this town that you're aware of what's happening to them by flying Old Glory upside down. You know that I have presented it to you that it is completely legal, ethical and moral to do that. The US flag code says that it's the exception of the rule to be able to fly it upside down when your country is in danger or dire distress. Now, I don't want to be a downer here and I'm not going to be a downer because I have full faith that this country eventually will come out of this. But not for a while. And by flying that flag upside down, it will say, we hear you. We know that you are hurting to your own people in this town. And you're telling the people, the tens of thousands of people who go by every day saying, we have hope. We're going to re-instill hope into our people by letting them know we are aware of what is going on. And from my understanding is, I think I have to have four council members bring up the motion or bring up the point of considering this. And that's what I'm hoping now is that I get four council members to come up and bring it up to say, yeah, let's consider this. And it's unfortunate that it's going to be another month unless we call a special meeting to do this. Now, there's, there's no cost except for the time to turn that flag upside down. And I understand that it's a city employee and it'll probably take some machinery to turn it upside down. But then it will stay there until this country turns around as a brilliant big sign saying, we hear you. And to quote a movie, we will not go into the night quietly.
Thank you.
Okay? And so that's all I can say. And I hope, I'll answer any questions from any of y'all.
How do you think that Tony's flag upside down is going to throw the person's flag down?
Well, number one, I don't know that it will. But what it will do is it will start showing people, either the Douglas County Commissioners, then the state government. And then it will be reflected on the national government. Because as I mentioned to you last month, you asked me if I was going to take this on anybody else. And I have patiently waited for your all's response to this question. Because tomorrow or Wednesday, I am going national with this if I don't have your response. Either way, I'm going to go. I was hoping to be able to tell them that Southern Oregon stood by and stood tall and turned their flag upside down. Because I have the capability and the people that I know be able to be as six degrees of separation. I have two degrees of separation to one of the most powerful men in this country. And I can get to him within probably two days. And that will start a whole new dialogue on turning this flag upside down throughout this whole country.
How do you think that Vietnam veteran is maybe one of them? Being in Vietnam, flying, flying over the DMZ. And in thirteen months in Korea, it's going to take that and see it flying upside down. I can get it in the flat in the face.
Well, I hear you. I am a Vietnam-era veteran. I have never been in country, so thank you for your service because I was never there.
I put my life at risk every day for Ho Chi Minh Trail or DMZ, two tours.
Right.
And then also all of the South America.
Right.
I'm against it.
Okay, I think we've had your three minutes and we'll move on to the. Thank you very much, everybody. Mary?
Bean is my husband and we've talked about this quite a bit. And I wanted to remind you that this is not a humiliating or a bad thing to turn the flag upside down. According to the military code, that just means the country is in distress. It's not a slap in the face at all. It's just a call to arms attention. We are in distress. And so actually, the reason that we presented this is we want people to question, well, why is it upside down? And that will, it should bring the people together. Because people like me, like, what can I do about this country? I'm, look at all this going wrong with it. This is meant to be a positive thing to make people realize that we can stand together with our country, realizing that it's in distress, it needs help. And I'm a Christian, I will pray. When I see that, I will pray. If you look at it from God's point of view, he has a covenant with this country that our forefathers made. It's in our flag salute. It's in our national anthem. It's God we honor. And that's one thing I can do. I can see it and I can know that other people feel the same way I do. They love this country and they're standing together. So can I read you, I have a little poem I wrote, if it's okay to read it real quick here. As Old Glory waves in the breeze to God and God only, we bend our knees. Against all enemies, we stand up to fight, defending our land from a blight. For freedom, it takes courage, you see. Born of patriots' hearts like you and me. If we don't stand now, we will fall. So stand up with me, brothers, stand tall. So it's a call to stand together with your country. Do what you can to support our country. Because if we don't do something, we're not going to have a country. Did anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, and that's why Jean had mentioned giving, having a little slip of paper to answer people with, what does this mean? When the flag is upside down? Absolutely no disrespect, but honor to our flag and to our country. If our flag has stood for us for years and years and years, it's time we stand for it. Any questions?
Well, I want to thank you both very much for your thoughts, I really appreciate it. And at this time, if the council desires to consider this request, a motion will be made to direct the city manager to place this item on a future agenda. But until such a motion is made and adopted by the council, no further action will be made or taken on this matter at this time.
How, how would we know if someone chooses to take?
If it's on, if it's on an agenda item, that means that we will be taking action. Until then, we will not be taking.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And God bless them.
At this time, the meeting is adjourned and we'll be going into executive section.